I want to call this meeting to order. And we have a... That's good. Let's stand, word of prayer and the pledge. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you right now, some of us with very heavy hearts with what happened in Utah today. Father, we pray that you would be with this country, that peace would prevail, and that hatred would subside. Lord, we ask that you be with Charlie Kirk's family, what a precious little family it is. Father, we ask that you be with our community this weekend, fish fry weekend, and a lot of people visiting. And we just hope that everybody stays safe and everybody has a good time. And thank you for the blessings you give us. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call again with Andy, we're all here. That's good. First thing on the agenda is a budget public hearing. And the time is 6:31, and I'm opening the public hearing. Clerk and council discussion, so clerk, this is your baby, huh?
Well, not much to discuss. You guys have everything that we need for the budget. From the last time it was reworked, and we added some more money in for the Community Crossings grant. So I don't know, I mean, it's pretty set and dry. You guys have looked at it, do you have any questions for me at all?
I mean, you're right, it's set dry, we don't have a lot of options.
No, I mean, it's pretty well what it is, we have got more money in there for streets because of Community Crossings grant that we... Don will be talking about that a little bit later, that we're going to apply for. And it's one round this year, you can apply for up to a million dollars. So we've got enough match in here to be able to do that. If you don't have any questions for me, you can go ahead and, I guess...
All right, are there any council comments? Any citizen comments? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing at 6:32. Considered agenda, can I have a motion to accept all those reports?
So moved.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Alex, you're up, the drug and alcohol testing program, if you would, just wow us.
So, I'm Alex, I'm with Franciscan Working Well, that's Franciscan's occupational healthcare clinics. And I'm going to talk to you guys today about drug and alcohol, the overview of our program, as well as solutions that we think might fit what you guys' needs are. So, in general, Franciscan Working Well, we do provide urine, hair, or saliva drug screen testing for over 300 companies in Indiana, from Northwest Indiana, through Central Indiana, and through what we consider this part of Western Indiana, the Western region. We do offer DOT and non-DOT testing, and that's both hair, hair urine and saliva. We can test for any agencies, so if there are, I don't believe that you guys require any CDL drug testing, but if you do, we can easily accommodate that. For you guys, I know we had talked about possibly doing a 12-panel. We have reworked our drug panel since then. The most comprehensive panel we offer right now is called the E-Screen 11B. And what that is, is it's an instant urine drug analysis, so it gives you a real-time drug test in clinic. And what it tests for, 11 of the most popular drugs in the United States at this time, or illicit drugs in the United States at this time. One thing I do want to point out with instant drug tests, because there is always the question, what about prescription medications? So if somebody were to have an instant urine drug test, and they were, let's say, to test positive for amphetamines because they were on ADHD medication, it would not, it would just result as a non-negative, instead of a positive, and then what would happen, at no additional cost, is it would just be sent off to our labs, an MRO would review it, the MRO and their team would then reach out to the individual that's being drug tested, say, can you please send us a list of your prescription medications, any doctors we might need to follow up with? That entire process is included. So, for, I would say 90% of all drug tests, they can be done right there in the clinic, through the instant drug test policy, they can be done there in the clinic, and you can get your negative results instantly. For the 10% that aren't, again, those are sent off, and the highest care is given to ensure that a positive is actually a positive. Some major municipals that we work with in the Western area are City of Crawfordsville, City of Lafayette, City of West Lafayette, all the school corporations. We do regularly do pre-employment, reasonable suspicion, post-accident testing, and it's really just whatever you guys need. Now, I do, now the money part, I want, so let's talk about costs. We're not setting you guys up to, you know, have an annual contract that you pay X amount of dollars every month or every year, you're only paying for what you guys use, so it's a pay-per-service. You'll get, the city would be invoiced, I'm assuming we might, we probably set up so the bills would go to you. The clerk, correct?
Yes.
The clerk, and then obviously, just like any normal invoice, 120 days. Our drug, per drug test for the E-Cup, which is the one I was referencing to you guys, it's $45, and then again, that includes entire MRO services, as well as if you wanted to do an 11-panel, a simple 5-panel, a 4-panel. If you guys are interested in doing with or without THC, we have those options. And what we can do is, if you have a specific, let's say, for these employees, you just want these drug tests, for these employees, you want these drug tests, and then you do end up having a couple CDL or DOT required, we can also do those as well. Again, once you get into purely lab-based, which are your DOTs, it does go up to $55 because an MRO is involved every time, but again, you're only paying for the drug test you need. We do have a random drug testing consortium, if you guys want to be a part of it. My recommendation would be, just figuring out the number of employees you have, and if you wanted to do random drug testing, it's simple enough to put everybody's name in an Excel spreadsheet and then write a formula where it says to generate a random one every month, or like a random schedule to do those. You don't really get paid the extra consortium fees, if that is something you guys are interested in. I'm more than happy to discuss it with you guys and kind of run through the details. It does put you in, the downside, and why I wouldn't recommend it for you guys in this town, is it does put you in a national pool. And so let's say that you guys had 15 employees, it would be 15 employees in a pool of potentially 1,500. You might not see a random drug test for the first two or three years. So that's where a specialized pool would yield a better result for you.
We're talking, what, six employees? Is that right? Do we count your employees, are they in on it?
Well, they're not in on...
The random testing?
No, not normally random testing, but if I have suspicion, I can send them.
So, see, it would maybe only be four.
Yeah, so, and again, and with three.
Three.
See, it's been to three because they were DOT, but now they're not, nobody has a CDL, so they can't get a DOT test.
Well, we can still do, we can do DOT mirrors if you'd like.
At any time.
Yes.
We just order it.
So yeah, you would just order through us, and we do do walk-ins, so the closest clinic to here would be Crawfordsville, so you could just send somebody in as a walk-in. I will say, we are a little bit like Great Clips, where if you make an appointment, you're in and out, whereas if you walk in, you are at the mercy of people that did make appointments, or workplace injuries that do come in. We are going to see them first, but if you make an appointment, and you're ready, and it's a urine drug screen, and you're ready to go to the bathroom then, you're in and out in 15 minutes.
Sounds good.
Is that clinic at the mall, or at the hospital, or...
No, so...
Market Street, isn't it?
Yeah, so it's on Market Street. It's going there the first time, you will miss it the first time, I guarantee it, because it's on a back alley, but if you've been there the first time, it's pretty easy to get to. But it's 308 West Market Street.
Yeah, so it's down the hill, and yeah, past the new Sunoco. Okay, so, oh, you said 308 West?
It's in the middle.
It's in behind what used to be the old hooks.
Right.
It used to be in the doctor's office.
Yes.
Alrighty.
Doctor Blood.
So if we send somebody, you're saying we should call before we send them? Is that what you mean by trying to...
Yes, so call ahead, you can call me, you can call the clinic, Tony is the clinic manager. He always picks up, but I will say, of all, we have 18 clinic locations. I will say, our Crawfordsville clinic, specifically our front desk staff, are probably the most senior and the best-trained ones we have. So anybody there, so Stacy, Brittany, any of them, are more than happy to help you.
Okay, well, it sounds so simple. All we have to agree tonight is that we're going to be a part of it.
But it gets a little further than that, because before, we were in a pool. And I don't know how many people was in this pool, but they would come here and they would test it there. Well, he kept getting called, but they were all in the pool, and they all got tested. Now you're saying that if we get in this pool, it could be forever before we're ran, they could randomly pick their...
But he's saying that we shouldn't get in the pool.
Right.
Okay, so I mean, you guys are going to have to, we're going to have to have our own pool, they're going to go, somebody, I mean, they're, right?
No, if we decide only to send them when we have suspicion, we can do that too, right?
Or yeah, or...
I thought you were going to randomly send them.
Well, we don't have to.
Randomly, post-accident's the other big one we really see, again, if you guys aren't driving, like, if it's not CDLs, if you still have town vehicles, post-accident's always a good one. Also, we generally do recommend, I don't know if you guys use us for the town, hopefully hasn't, but you have war comp injuries, it is generally something that you'll get a lot of war comp carriers, that they request at least a 5-panel drug screen be performed to know that the town or whoever is liable, and it wasn't a drug incident.
I don't believe ours does.
And we could, like, if we came in, if we just walked in, decided on the 14th this month, we wanted one of our people to be drug tested, we could tell them that, and they would have to go, right?
Yeah, no, we are not going to send somebody to come get your employee, to force them in, but yes, if you get them in the clinic, we, there's a three-hour time limit to drug testing, so if they have a quote-unquote shy bladder, we, after three, we give them water up to, so we have protocols to give them water, stuff like that, that won't dilute the urine too much, but if they still say they're shy bladder, or they refuse to pee after three hours, we, then we do release them. But yeah, up to that three hours, we will hold them in the clinic for you, for the urine, for the urine analysis.
Right, and then if you have a suspicion, you shouldn't be letting them get in a car and drive anyway, right?
We recommend that, but we do have employers that send employees in.
I think you were the one that mentioned that, that it never even dawned on me, that, yeah, especially, if you're doing it randomly, I guess that would be one thing, but if you literally have a suspicion that they're drunk, I don't think it'd be a good idea.
So, and then that brings me to breath alcohol tests, so we do, we can perform those in combination. There are two types of breath alcohol tests, DOT and non-DOT. It's the exact same test, all it is, is it's how it's reported. So DOT, there's generally a longer chain of custody that goes along with it, but blood, breath alcohol test is going to be the same reading regardless. So we can also perform that at the time of service.
Okay, so I'm thinking if we do want to do random testing, then we're going to have to establish that ourselves somehow. And which I think, I think we could maybe handle that.
And he, if he's busy, he could call any of us, you agree, right?
Yeah.
And we can load them up, and take them, and bring them home?
If you're willing to do that.
If it's random...
We can do both, we can...
I know, but you, Bob, can't make a decision as Bob Cox, it takes five people to make a decision, so who's going to randomly do this random, you know what I'm saying?
Sorry, go ahead.
I would say, I think town, print, we can give the board president...
Okay, as long as, yeah.
Because, yeah, we're not going to be able to meet and then say...
Right.
But we just, we just make a policy that, you know, and it doesn't have to be every month, it can just be, I mean, it...
I mean, it could be, it could be two or three days, boom, boom, boom.
Right.
And that may be what needs to be, I mean, before, this was one of my biggest things, before that random pool, it was a quarterly, and we don't want to go there, because, you know, in the first quarter, the first day of the first quarter, you get, you, you know, we get pulled, I don't know if any of them, them were smart enough, they were going to get it the next, you know, two months or not.
So we would have to...
The saying that we were using right after.
Yeah, on the way back, on the way back from the clinic.
But when we were in that pool, we didn't even get hit every quarter, one of them.
No, and that's what he just said, it could take two years.
We want to do it ourselves.
We'll figure it out. Any other questions, I think? It just sounds so easy.
I guess just trying to figure out, you know, what we want, and then I have to get the paperwork.
There is no paperwork, right?
Well, there is for him, for me to cut a check to the place.
So, yeah, what'll happen is I, if you guys decide tonight that you guys do want to go with the drug testing program through Franciscan Working Well, we can hop on a quick phone call at any point this week, and get you guys' accounts set up, it's really just making sure results are going to who, invoices are going to who, who is authorized to send somebody in, or what is considered a designated employer representative. I'm assuming it'd probably be everybody on the board here, and that's going to be, who can bring people in, who can call to make an appointment, basically, if you come in, we are going to ask for your ID, we do do verbal authorization over the phone now. So even, I apologize, I'm not familiar with all your guys' names, but your name is?
Barry.
If Barry were to bring Aaron in, if Barry, Barry was not a designated employer representative, we would just have to call Bob, Bob would give us the authorization, and then you could still stay with him.
I think we need it, this is what we were hoping to have, I think. And we'll have to, we'll have to work on how we're going to handle it all, but we can handle that, we can do that.
I'm moving forward with this.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, all in favor of adopting the Franciscan Working Well drug and alcohol testing? Say aye?
Aye.
Pass. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, guys, you guys have a great rest of your evening.
Do you like ice cream?
I do, but I'm on a diet.
I try!
I appreciate it.
This diet ice cream, look.
Yeah.
They take out all of the calories, is what I...
There's the two that open. Alright, thank you.
Cross street or alley corner. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we'll continue to work on that, we'll figure out how to do that. Okay, so, next, we got citizen public comments, we got two citizens, three citizens here, anybody want to say anything? Just here to listen, we think it's working tonight, too. It was like 30 minutes before, okay. David's not here, that surprises me.
It's not going to be able to make it tonight, just want to see them decide what they're going to do. I don't necessarily need to be there, I don't have anything more to add on my end of things, I just want them to come together as a decision that we can all live with, let me know.
Okay, I know there have been some things in people's minds, what they've been kicking around. I know that with the, with the new street work sidewalks is included in it this time, and at least on Vine Street.
Only if you mill and resurface.
And isn't that Vine Street? Isn't that what we're doing?
There's, I think what we would like to do is...
It's just from the sidewalk to the church, right?
Start with the first block of Vine Street, mill off, inch and a half, and put two inches back, and then our sidewalks qualify to be under the grant.
So we can fix them.
Yeah, even though Vine Street's not terrible, it's still cheaper to do that through the grant than it is to do the sidewalks. And honestly, that's part of that first round we did, and we didn't ask for virgin asphalt, and it's just, there's cracks everywhere.
Yep.
So, rather than sealing it, or crack sealing, or seal coating the whole thing, let's go virgin asphalt, get it done, get sidewalks done, we can go a block at a time every year, or however, you know.
Now, I did notice, I didn't see, any cracked ceiling, was that not in that?
Well, we're going to...
Would that be our own?
No, we're going to do the things we wanted to hit, and then see what, where we're at.
Oh, okay.
So...
You asked John to pursue two things, which was the Loretta and the park.
Right, right.
I mean, we're not, I guess we could go ahead and talk about Community Crossings right now, if you want to.
When do I talk about?
Here in a little bit, about what you're thinking, yeah.
Ken was here this morning, did he get anything sent to you?
Yes, I sent it out to everybody.
Yep, you sure did. Barry didn't send, get it?
Oh, I got it, finally.
Because I sent it.
Well, I finally...
Oh, you got it, he was beyond that?
Yeah, my email working.
Oh, so it was your email that was goofy.
It was Sherry's email. Yeah, what I would see sharing.
So, long story short, a pretty short tweet, did you read it, did you get it?
I looked at it, now I can't find it.
600...
I probably got it.
Okay.
But it was right?
I'll just say it out loud if it's okay to everybody. Vine Street total estimate, 136 to Walnut, two-inch mill, two-inch surface, sidewalks, pavement markings, adjust castings to grade 175. Park aggregate as needed, 400 ton, and asphalt, three-inch binder, two-inch surface, 2,100 tons, and miscellaneous work, 425,000. Loretta, 385,000 to 400,000 will require full design and end dot driveway permit, and these are preliminary, probably a little high numbers, but close. So that's where we're at.
So, whether you get the numbers, if you don't want to mess with Loretta in this go-around, you can do two more blocks and sidewalks.
Up Vine Street.
And the park.
Up Vine Street.
Yeah, or any street we wanted to. I wouldn't do the ones we just did last go-around, because, and I wouldn't do anywhere that there's one of those big old maple trees.
But you're not getting all the way to 136 with this project, you're going to have 25 foot, that's...
The states?
Right. Yes, you should remember that.
Right.
That's okay, because where our, where we start's more than 25 feet from the corner.
Right.
And we already have drawings.
I'd say, so, if you just do Vine and the park, you're talking $600,000. And our 20% would be 120,000.
Right, other than the 60, but if we went ahead and added some more, did the whole million, right? Is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what we want to do...
Because we've got that money set aside, too.
While we can still do the Community Crossings grant, let's do what we can do.
Well, they're going to have it every year, I mean...
Not necessarily.
Now, that...
That's not what they're saying, yeah.
That only works for existing sidewalks, you can't put in a sidewalk where there's not one.
Right. By the, by the end dots rule.
We did Loretta, we couldn't put a sidewalk in anyway, is that correct?
Right.
Not with that money, no.
So, you know what Loretta is?
What street is that?
Oh.
It's the last street west.
Oh.
The question was, where is Loretta? Remember, you got to speak up and ask, talk up here, please. I know, it's hard to get used to that.
It should be picking everybody up now.
I thought it was maybe an actual member or something.
Oh, no, that's an actual street, the only one I've ever, we've ever built since I've been on this, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so...
I'm just trying to figure out what your priorities are, is your priority is to go down Vine Street all the way to the park? Is that your first...
Eventually, you're saying.
I mean, I, I mean, that would be up to you guys, what your priority...
That's where I can start, work our way out.
Yeah, and do it, you do both sides.
Well, but you can't build one on the west side, because part of that, don't have a sidewalk, I don't think.
On the east side.
East side.
On the east side, the west side doesn't.
On the east side, there is no sidewalk from Garfield on.
Yeah, and that would be a nice place for a sidewalk, because Ken's walking to the pool.
Well, then, I mean, we have money in here, like our riverboat money, it can be used for anything, any legal purpose, so, I mean, if we...
There's probably not enough money in our riverboat to put a sidewalk from Garfield all the way to the park.
No.
No, but what I'm saying is, if, you know, if we can't use the matching funds to do that, we might have some little bit of money if we don't use our entire...
I was thinking, I don't think people realize how expensive it is putting in a sidewalk where there's not a sidewalk. Do you know that, Jay?
How wide's the sidewalk, got to be four foot?
Four foot.
And you have to, a lot of big trees up that way.
Right, those trees would have to go.
And actually, you want to tell what Ken said about the trees? He didn't send it to us, but what he said?
Yeah, there's, I don't know what kind of tree it is, but there are trees that they can allow to be planted between the road and the sidewalks, because they have small root systems, and they're deep roots. He couldn't remember the name of the tree, I have no idea.
The roots go down, not...
Right, they go down, not the city.
That's what they planted in the city, and...
They took them out, they go to your...
Well, those were grass, those weren't the grass for once, they, but the ones that they just replanted this year. But I would strongly urge, if we do that, not to let people plant between sidewalk and street.
That would be fine.
Because, as a code enforcement officer, you're going to cut half those trees down anyway, because as they're starting to get tall, they're going to block the view of people pulling out of their driveways. So somebody's going to complain about it, you're going to cut them down anyway.
Oh, the new ones?
Yes.
Already go...
Already have had some of them.
I would just say, no, no trees in that.
Currently, on the, on the west side, we could go all the way up to South Street without having to remove a tree.
Which side is the west?
Is that yours?
That's west.
Okay, so that's not the side the park is even on?
Right, there's one tree in there, house that Dave bought on the alley, is that, did that, did that get cut?
It's gone, it's gone.
It's gone?
Oh, Mary, it is.
No, it's not, the one big one is not, it's still in front of, you're right, where his mom lives. Yeah, that one's still there, but it needs to go, I pick more of it up every day than...
So we need to decide tonight because of the timing, right?
Well, yeah, yes.
I mean, you, you tell me your preferences, and that's where we'll go with it.
I'm okay with dropping Loretta.
I am, too.
Yeah, okay.
I'm okay with that.
I mean, because I don't think, it's not very, it can't be traveled by very many vehicles, not like Vine Street.
No.
That's probably our, would you guys agree, it's one of our heaviest traveled?
Yeah, it's 136, let's get more traffic.
I mean, Vine Street makes sense when it starts off.
Okay, I got a question for you, when Ken was talking, blah, 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 the park, now, is he just talking the parking lot and the circle, or does this figure include the new road?
Starts at Union Square...
Okay.
And goes all the way through the park, and that would also include the parking area.
So that includes the new, that includes the new, the new road, the parking area and the circle?
But no sidewalks?
No.
No sidewalks.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it included, I just wanted to make sure it included the new, the new...
But not the parking area in front of the park, the pool, correct? Yeah, we have three streets converging there, we're just going to make them wider.
Oh.
But it makes sense to just clear up the sidewalk that goes to where the old school...
But it makes sense to just clear up the sidewalk that goes to where the old school was, to get that access to the pool rather than trying to put new sidewalk.
Well, from, from there, there's no sidewalks at all.
Yeah.
Getting. There's things we can do in the park with trails that D and R has grants for.
Right, that'd be nice.
So that's something we can look at later.
Without the matching money too.
I know Davy would love to see trails in the park, but.
But I mean.
Basically sidewalks.
But I mean, basically though, we need, we need to make that a street. I mean, we, we, we made it a street, we need to pave it.
Right.
In my eyes.
And what we can do.
And then we can get a sidewalk sometime down the road, but you need a road first.
You talking park and the park?
How wide did he say on that? If we go twenty-four feet wide with asphalt, we can paint a walk lane.
That's why I was wondering here.
Then you have a sidewalk all the way around it.
But I don't think he's quoted that price for it.
I couldn't remember.
If that's what you want, yeah, I don't think.
I didn't know if he did the twenty foot or twenty-four foot.
It don't either, it doesn't say.
Honestly, with the base we have there, I don't think we can go twenty. I think we can only go sixteen, but we'll see once we pursue it a little farther. That was just stuff that, with him knowing the cost of everything, what, what it would be, so.
So, it sounds like.
He's always high.
Sounds like the will of the board, if it's not, let me know, the Vine Street, take it all the way up to the, to South Street if we can?
If we can.
To see how far we can go, I guess.
Yeah.
And then the park with this.
Well, the park would be priority one, wouldn't it?
And then we will not worry about Loretta.
Right.
Park's priority one.
Okay.
I, I, I'm asking, I'm not.
I, I would say yes. We've been, we've been wanting to get the park, right, for several years.
Yep.
So park and vine, pretty much.
Take it all. And we'll see how much we can get on Vine Street, how much we can get done, right?
Right, and there might be some, some crack seal, that's, that, that stuff doesn't cost.
Okay.
Anything.
Oh, we're talking about streets.
Oh, yeah, we, did he include that?
No.
Because we put that on.
Obviously, somebody needs a patch Gladiator where they.
He was gonna.
Hey, let it settle good.
Oh, I know, I know.
See what happened to us at the.
Oh, I know, I know. Well, it, it could probably use some more stone because it's already settled about like that.
Traffic control. Yeah.
Okay.
So do you wanna add, are you thinking next time or this time or?
Well, I thought he was gonna put that in there.
He did not.
Because we circled it on the map.
We did, we, we talked about.
I can't imagine that's gonna be very much, I mean, if you just patch that hole.
No, once it settles, I mean.
I may say, three or four, well, I have the truckload.
I can do the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I mean, that's easy.
Well, I don't think it's.
I'm not gonna do three blocks of sidewalk.
Right, well, the only, there's only about that much of sidewalk.
Right, it's one test, one test.
But uh, but the, the street itself is pretty gnarly.
Yeah.
So you're wanting all Gladiator?
No, not all of Gladiator, just the patch that they tore up.
Which.
They came in, they came in and tore it up because, yeah, it's a patch, it's about half as, it's about as wide as this table to about here. I mean, it's. About four, four. About, about a four by four, four by five.
Oh, do you think, okay.
But Gladiator doesn't need to be moved down anymore.
No. Just that patch to take four up.
You wanna include the patch? Okay, alrighty, so now it's three places.
I don't drive, but we don't bother.
Oh, I heard the, grounding. So, now we're talking about a patch, small patch on Gladiator and park and see how far we can get up on Vine Street. That's pretty simple. Okay, any uh.
Mine, we're gonna have work to do at the park, you add five inches of asphalt on there. Drop off, I have to go in.
With some gravel or?
Either, you do uh. Some type of aggregate or we backfill with dirt and slope it off.
Are we gonna have to, are you gonna have to do anything about stormwater runoff if you pave all that? Is there someplace for the stormwater runoff and?
To the creek or to the retention pond. That's the only place. We don't have any storm drains out there.
Okay. Obviously, that'd be my biggest concern. If, if you're going for all that being gravel, especially right in front of the pool, if you put all that down to concrete. You're gonna flood that baseball diamond every time it rains. Because it's, because it's slanted, all that water's gonna run, run off and that big baseball diamond's gonna be flooded.
I mean, it does now when it's.
Used to.
It does now when it rains hard, it doesn't really soak in up there because.
Yeah, but it still soaks in more in gravel than it's going to on asphalt. It's just gonna be.
I wonder if we ought to do a study on that part of it or not, because they can, right?
Well, they can.
Storm drain, corner of Vine, yeah. Mine and whatever right there.
It's South Street, the corner of South and Vine's the last storm drain.
Could you put it into the sewer?
We can run it to the retention pond.
Could you run it into the sewer and not hurt itself?
Oh, no, 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 no.
You're only talking that one spot.
Run anything into the sewer.
Yeah.
I would a lot, but.
No, you don't run.
If, if it was a problem, we can run a storm drain over to the retention pond.
That's what I would say.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can, okay.
Stormwater money for that.
Yeah.
Can we run it over to the southeast corner of the park?
And flood his field?
Obviously thinking Barry's house.
Give me irrigation, I won't give you that.
Now, you talking about the air, the pond there, you're, you're, that's retention, yeah.
It's not really a pond. I don't think I've ever seen water in it.
Once, once, it got to be about four foot deep, we had a, we had about four inches of rain in about a half hour. It's the only time in twenty years I've lived there I've saw.
I've never seen it. I've seen water.
Okay.
Flow through because it just flows straight across and goes out, but.
So are we okay with that? Can I have a motion? Alright, so what we said, uh, park, Vine Street as far as they go, and that little patch.
Yep.
Who made it?
Randy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, Mr. Smith can get busy here calculating. Then, now let's get back to the ADA thing. That's what started all of this. Doug, you wanna, you've kind of been thinking about this.
I think that I was, had a phone call today and people was talking about to get money for our sidewalk, if we shouldn't put it. Like a tax, like a two dollar per household tax on.
It would not be a tax.
Well, Peoples is looking into that.
Okay.
He's not sure it's legal, but I talked to him yesterday in Crowe's zone, he's looking in to see if we can do that.
Okay.
Because at one time we wanted to try to do something like that for the park and we couldn't.
We did?
Yeah, before we got the money, when we were trying to figure out how to fund the pool, and that was not allowed.
Okay.
David, David said that he would look into that.
And we're talking about a monthly fee like we do trash pickup.
Like a trash pickup thing.
The only thing I'm gonna say about a monthly fee for people is you have trash and I have trash, we're both paying trash. I'm gonna be paying five dollars into sidewalks, how long is it gonna be before I get a sidewalk?
Right.
Who's gonna get first sidewalks? That's gonna be where this issue.
It's gonna have to be patience.
But you, you know what I'm saying? I could, I could see that being a problem.
Yeah, I mean.
Center of town and working your way.
Yeah, that, you put it together, plan, say, here it is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
I mean, it's just like, you know, if you need, you know, we all pay into stormwater and. Who, who gets their stormwater fixed? It's wherever's the worst.
Yeah.
So it'd be basically the same way.
But we'll have to see what the attorney comes up with. And then we can start having a pool of money where we can go and do ADA sidewalk replacement.
Right.
Which is a step forward for.
And like, when I was talking with Dave yesterday, he said, all you have to have is a plan. So if you say you're going to do, if you, if you bring in ten thousand dollars, because two dollars a person, we figured out it'd be about ninety-six hundred dollars a year. And that, that's ten thousand dollars, it's not gonna do much, but it's a plan.
Yeah.
And all you have to have in place is a plan.
Right. And ever since I have been on this board, I've always dreamt to have some kind of a grant, of a grant program or like Ladoga does. Where if you wanna replace the sidewalk in front of your house, they pay for it up front and the town would reimburse them for half. They've done that for several years and that's why a lot of their sidewalks really look really nice.
Problem with doing one property at a time, as elevation changes and now you get, this guy does this now, the neighbor does this.
Yeah.
Now we don't need ADA. I like that, but.
Wouldn't you have to control the elevations? Wouldn't you have control over the elevation if they applied for the program?
Well, I don't know where they're gonna.
It would have.
You'd have to have a plan for that whole block.
Yeah.
You'd have to have a plan for that whole block.
Huh?
You have to have an engineered plan because the elevation changes.
Uh-huh.
Because if you set it there and this guy does his three years down the road, it's not gonna be at the same level as.
Well, there's, there's gotta be hurdles over with everybody. So I'm not, I don't wanna cancel anything out just because we can come up with reasons not to tonight. I don't think that's, that's a good way to do it. But I don't, you know, again, that's, I've been wanting to do that and you know that, I've been wanting to do something like that for a long time. Does anybody else have any other ideas? I mean, we've got sidewalks that need, need to replace for the ADA.
Part of our money that can be used for sidewalks, correct? One of those.
CDC?
Yeah, the, and the riverboat.
Riverboat.
Mm-hmm.
So that money can be used for sidewalks.
It's not gonna get.
If we don't, if we don't use that as match for the grant.
Right, so you, I mean, you could do that. I will tell you this, it costs, it costs more to run one block of sidewalk than it does the asphalt both lanes in the road.
I believe it.
Yes.
That, that counts.
That was pretty cheap.
But.
You had good labor.
Labor was free in my little big brown concrete.
Yeah. So, um, it sounds like, you know, that's gonna have to be a plan that we've got to stick with and we've got to keep working on it. And um, and since David brought it up to us, we've got to, you know, uh, not appease David, but make sure we have a plan that, that works. Make sure we have a plan, you know, well, obviously we all know that we can't, we don't have a half a million dollars to do everything all at once and David knows that, he's not expecting us to do that. So, um.
Half a million dollars would do it all.
That's a good thing.
Well, I thought if I'd won that lottery, guys, we were gonna have new sidewalks throughout the whole town, but didn't win. My two dollar ticket was thrown, thrown away. Um, so, um, that's, uh, I think that's. Thanks to David, we're talking about it and we're trying to be more conscious of it. Now, we still don't know about, um, with this on Vine Street, can we add the ramp? That David says we need to install, there's other people saying.
Sidewalks in there, yeah, we should be able to.
Well, we wouldn't take up their new sidewalk.
But you could put a ramp on top of it, right?
Yeah.
Have to cut out where the ramps.
Yeah, however it works, but.
At, at least where the ramp's going has to be cut, because if you say, if you do on top of it, it's just gonna.
Well, and, and have you measured if, if we, if we make the ramp wide enough to comply with ADA, is then, is there enough? From the edge of the ramp to the street to make that?
And they went down and measured after that meeting.
There is, the only place that the issue is, where is one of the state highway has their, uh, stoplight pole.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, now, as you get south, the, the cross, the cross slope. Down close to the fire hydrant, that's off.
Yeah.
Too much slope, cross slope.
If you're gonna do that, we need to change that fire hydrant out before they did.
Yeah, we have drawings. I thought I sent, like, did I give you that drawing last month?
I'm watching, no, no.
So, the, um.
That's already been drawn, that's already been.
Right, I know that.
And Davy has that drawn.
Yeah. Um, so I think, here's the other part of it. Um, I've had city and town attorneys tell me that it's not our responsibility building the ramp. First, David, the expert, says it is, so I don't know. But, um, if we, you know, I'm, um, the city attorney and the county attorney both said they'd never heard of that, so.
Those sidewalks are our responsibility?
No, that, we would have to put the, be responsible for the ramp.
Right, I don't know.
I don't, I mean, it.
You would think there's a grandfather clause somewhere, I don't know.
Well, when it comes to ADA.
Yeah, ADA rules.
Well, when it comes to ADA or something.
I think if you don't change.
Now, David explained it.
That. Building or that shop, whatever you have there, that, that doesn't have to be changed.
Well, that's.
I don't know the exact rule, law.
Yeah.
But if they went in there and gunned the whole thing and, and completely redid an entire building, they're probably gonna have to go ADA. But if you're, I, I don't know, I only know what little bit Davy tells me.
Right.
Well.
I mean, I have the book, but.
It's like reading a.
Well, it's.
It'll never be written where you think it should be written in.
Well, I can say, you know, and the thing is, you talk to ten people, five people are gonna tell you, this is the way they interpret it, five people, so you're kind of.
Now, the lady at the state highway that I, just after that last meeting, I, I said, well, what do you, can, can you help us? And of course, state highway, we know what they said. Nope.
Yeah, we'll see what Davy gets done.
Yeah, that's true, because he's kinda on him too.
The state did West Lafayette and then turned it over to West Lafayette when it was done. And there was so much wrong with it that West Lafayette had to go back and fix all kinds of cross slopes and. So, I just don't understand why the state would waste their time and money to come through here and put ADA crosswalks at every intersection along the highway and not have a sidewalk that you can even get to it on.
Yeah.
That's stupid.
Yeah.
But.
That's the state.
That's.
So, you have anything to add to this, you guys? I mean.
No, but while you're talking about the state, why don't you have, ask them to fix, to widen the bridge up onto twenty-five?
Oh, they're very aware of that.
Instead of spending, instead of spending money up on the interchange that has had water accident in fifty years, that would be a good place to spend the money.
That, that has been talked several years with them, that we need a new bridge, is what we need.
But I'm saying, they're just gonna, they're getting ready to spend a whole bunch of money up on the interchange to do, to do nothing.
Yep. Good old state. Yep, there's no question that that bridge needs to be replaced and widened so the truck can make the turn. And, uh, yeah, I, you know, I didn't get it when I called up there, when the trucks were tearing up their yard down there, I, I didn't get, you know, they. They said they came down and looked at it, but I know they didn't.
They replaced that sidewalk there a few years back.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that. They will replace, but they won't make the sit, they'll, it's gonna break down the next time, right?
You have to fix the approach to the bridge about every three weeks, right?
Yeah, we don't get it.
Do it every week. They wait a couple more after it gets destroyed to fix it.
Yeah. Okay, so we okay with developing a plan? It sounds like we've got something going. I don't know, I guess, I don't know if we have to respond. Did David write it?
Yes, you, what, no, he said you didn't have to be in writing, it could be a proposal, but what is your response? That's what, I mean, that's what he's.
Well.
The bridge is in place going with our, starting with our community crossing grant.
Right.
We're already.
Quite a bit of money. And then, uh, we're looking at, still trying to figure out how to do the ramp or how that all works out. And, uh, I mean, you, I mean, David realizes we can't do it all at once and none of us would even expect that we could unless we have some.
Okay, I just, I guess I just wanna know what, one in the minutes as your response to David's complaint. Because this is an ADA thing and that's gonna have to be incorporated in as a thing. So what is, what do you, what is it?
What we just said.
I don't know what you just said.
The ADA, we will start addressing the sidewalk problem along Vine Street with this community crossings grant.
Okay.
And then, we are going to continue to look at, um, how to do a ramp if, if we need to.
A ramp, just.
On Vine Street.
On Vine Street.
For, to fix their problem?
Yep. And then we.
It's not their problem.
Well, I didn't mean it like that.
And then, uh. And then, maybe some kind of an ongoing sidewalk program. If, see, find out what the attorney finds out. So, there's three things for you.
Okay, perfect.
So, um.
So when we're putting a sidewalk and we can do the ramp at the same time going down Vine Street, right?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
I don't know, uh, that the community crossings grant will do the ramp.
Oh, you do just run the sidewalk down to the street.
Yeah, if we have to, if we have to mill there.
I thought you were talking about like another ramp that you walk.
Technically, if we do the sidewalk, it has to be ADA, currently it is not, that would just get encompassed in there.
So there would be no ramp?
No, you definitely put it back with a ramp.
You're, you're thinking a ramp like this, it's just going on to the sidewalk.
Well, it's kinda built so they can get into their buildings.
Their building, I'm talking about going down sidewalks on Vine Street.
Oh.
And there's already, they're, they're already there, so, on both of those, to Garfield.
So you got those three things?
I do, thank you, thank you. And then are we gonna, I'm gonna ask David to tell them or?
If they need, um, the ADA standards, they're supposed to.
John, you've been talking a lot to Davey, do you wanna tell him this, these three things?
Yes, I told him I would respond to him.
Okay, that's.
I will get with him tomorrow.
All right, let us know what kind of reaction or whatever.
Follows and I'll call and get with him tonight after the meeting, but I'm on call.
Okay. All right, Kyle, we can move on now to your speech on ordinance violations.
All right, out of the, we gave out four more in August, all four of those will comply.
Yay, thank you citizens.
There were five that still have them, but they have until the eighteenth of September to, before they get their additional fine, which I'm sure not, I'm a painter first one. There's two that are extended and, like I said, there were two in August twenty-four, two in August twenty, you have them and they comply.
You have a sheet for me?
Sandy, the people who don't pay their fines. Are we turning that into the?
I'm not turning it into anybody, I didn't find them. I'll take a, I'll take the fine, but I, I mean, I, I don't.
Bill them.
No, that's what he's doing, he bill them.
Well, you've got to print the letter, it's an offer.
Yeah, so if they don't pay it, then, the next time it just goes up to higher fine, right?
Well, see, the thing is, there's a way that you can put that onto their property taxes, so then we get paid.
True.
Yeah, check deals.
Yeah, I think he's giving out letters and they need to why.
Yes, it's a lien, if they don't pay their fines, you put a lien on their property and when they go to pay their property taxes, the next time, they can't figure out why their property taxes went up so much, that's swine.
So that's what you do it?
That's what we do in Crawfords though.
You do that or?
No, it's, our treasurer does.
She, one of the many people in her office.
She, she, she bills, she bills, well, actually, she turns, she doesn't do it, she turns it into the, um, treasurer, the county treasurer. And they put a lien on it.
I don't know, I'll, I'll get old peoples and find out, I guess, if that's what you wanna start doing.
Well, yeah.
I thought we just kept, I thought we were just keeping finding them. It, it keeps going up.
It does, but if they don't pay the first one, they need to.
Then that, then after, then after thirty days, then that gets turned in and we get to put it up, and then if it goes up the next thirty days, that, it just keeps, it just keeps piling up.
Twenty-five hundred.
And eventually they'll pay it or.
When they sell their property, they'll get paid closely.
Okay, well, it's not, I, it's something I'll get with peoples on, it's probably not gonna happen immediately because it's gonna be, you know, like court, there's cost to do that and how it's all gonna work, but.
There'll be costs, yeah. Okay. Um, all right, thanks Kyle. Aquatic Center and Park Employee Fringe Benefit versus a tax-free gift, what I called, uh, what was it?
You called the State Board of Accounts and basically, this is the only way that, from what I interpreted, that it worked was because they, their last day of employment was on Saturday and you gave them a gift on Sunday.
Monday.
Otherwise, they would have been taxed. Is that how you interpreted it?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so, that's what happened and I, I think that we're ever able to give a free gift of up to, like, for anybody or the, uh, a whole thing, like up to nineteen hundred dollars, but not for just one person, it'd be like anybody, we gave them free gift to.
Yeah.
But that's the only reason they weren't taxed as a taxable fringe benefit was because their last day was that Saturday.
And they're happily ever married, hap- they will live happily, what did I try to say?
They're married and smiling.
For the first year. The first year. Okay. Uh, pool furniture chairs, loungers, fun umbrella versus umbrella.
Yeah.
We have a fight between the fun umbrella and the umbrella?
Well, I'm just saying, that fun umbrella, you, it's.
Oh, it's last leg.
But do you really need that up there? Do we really need that big of a big old thing for one lifeguard to sit under? Or do we cut it off?
Parents, parents, grandparents, they sit under it while the kids are playing.
Sure they do.
They, you could almost have fights over the shade up there with the.
You're talking probably ten grand, so.
Yeah, well.
I mean, you're gonna.
It's eleven years old.
I don't know if I can get one that fits that particular one, so you're probably gonna replace the whole thing.
Really?
I don't, I don't have any information on.
I don't know if there's a tarp making around anymore, it made boat covers, cause that's what that is.
There is one in me because I took it up there to be sung before.
Yeah, would, um.
But.
Okay, would, uh, our pool people know?
What?
Spear.
Spear?
Would they know?
Yeah, I could've worked one through them, but.
Well, I'm, okay, so they know the size, I thought you were just wondering why the size was.
Right, I don't know. They may not even make, I'm sure over the years, they've made better ones, they may not even manufacture that particular one.
Understand. But as far as the pool, we've not had any problems with that working, have we?
No.
Yeah.
But there's sixteen arms on there and sixteen snap straps that go on every one, so it would have to be perfect fit. So if you don't get one that's made for that exact model.
If you even can.
You're not gonna get it right.
I would contact them to ask, how can we replace it?
I can give a spear.
Yeah. I haven't seen any of Big Lots or anything, so.
Okay, so when, at the beginning of the season, when Haley was here, she talked about chairs and wanting more of the sling chairs. Not the kind that lay, you lay down, but the, these kinds, um, and they are, uh, a two-pack at seven twenty-nine. So it's like four hundred fifteen ninety per chair, but there's, those chairs have been up there since twenty-eleven and they're still.
Look brand new.
Good. So that's versus buying a twenty-five dollar cheap chair that's gonna break it.
Which we've done that too.
Oh, we have not.
Those that are on that.
Somebody, somebody donated them. So, also, when we're playing on those loungers, there are a couple of them.
On the.
On the lounge.
We might be able to see if you can get a re, huh? That's what I was gonna say, I don't know where they, I've got one of those.
I'd have to look at them to see how.
Look, maybe look and see if we can, but I didn't know if you wanted to. Their two-pack is seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, ninety-seven.
For two chairs?
Yeah.
Hey. We paid that much for this?
Well, probably not quite that much, but yeah, they're.
Paid six hundred percent.
These are, these are commercial grade.
Problem? Problem?
Okay. All right, so you're looking to.
I just didn't know if you wanted to try to get something when they have, will have a sale from time to time.
Yeah, they do. How many do we buy?
I don't know.
We don't have a lot of extra room anyway, it's not anymore chairs, do we?
Haley just wants chairs, you guys wondered, was gonna let, let Doggo buy some cheap ones and they didn't have them or?
Couldn't even find it, they had some, but they were.
But all the chairs that are up there, we really don't have a lot of room for that many more, do we? Am I wrong?
Uh, those chairs, just the regular chairs.
Cause they don't take a much.
You can line the entire fence with those. What they do is they grab them from wherever they're at and go, there's room for those, there's not room for more loungers.
Yeah.
Cause you can't put those down there around the flat area that puts the walkway. But. But you do need, there's a couple of those that need to be replaced or need to be repaired of the loungers. I just, I need to look at the chairs and see how they're put together.
So what do we want to do on that?
I just notice.
How many we need first, I reckon.
Yeah, how do we, how do we find out how many we need and how do we figure out, half a dozen?
I think six, you could probably do, do four pretty easy, do six and I would wonder.
I wouldn't either.
Geez.
I mean, the price, it's not a cost per eight and everything else to get here too.
Right.
But these are, you know.
Hopefully they don't end up floating like that one container. So we want Sandy to be able to look out to order six, maybe order if she sees them on sale or just get them ordered anyhow, cause they don't take forever to get here, don't they?
Yeah, I, I'd say, uh.
Look, I think probably, um, Mrs. Perry.
I'm sure it was, uh, somebody that we furnished them.
Okay.
Six of them and then John was gonna back on the fun umbrella. Well, that was some.
Pretty, uh, it's popular, it's popular. Not often, they do some. They're busy as fuck.
They can go on them too.
Uh, okay, let me just ask you this before we, couldn't you buy maybe four or five smaller ones that are on a base that wouldn't?
No, because they'll blow over.
Yeah, I've replaced mine on my porch several times.
Yeah, the wind, the wind will knock them right over, bend them.
You see where I was going with that?
If they're not anchored, then I wouldn't have.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
But I can, sure I can find one that will slide right down in the lead that's already there.
Oh, yeah, okay, I thought you were talking about replacing the whole thing.
No, I am, I was.
Even the, oh.
Definitely, yeah, I mean, if you can't find.
Right, if you can't find it, we're gonna do something.
That exact, that exact model, you're not gonna get one that fits right.
Yeah, okay.
So you would have to.
Well, good, you get to look into that and hopefully we'll have a, something by the. Um, next up is the pool repairs and quote, the sandblast pool and painting the pool, uh, remember they went?
That was a shocker.
Before we, can I just say one more thing about the pool report, did everybody look at the?
Oh, yeah, the money.
So.
We actually made, well, no, no, we didn't make money.
We didn't make money, we covered expenses and covered wages.
For the second time in the pool's history.
Twenty-eleven, it's the second time we've made payroll.
Yeah. Yeah. So we can't complain about that?
Yeah, I'm guessing that's gonna be a trend for the next few years, so probably they'll set stuff straight down.
Well. There's something, that's a whole nother story.
So, I mean, we, uh, we raised the price of pool parties this year for this past year, which helped with that as well. And then with Crawfordsville being closed, as much as they were, that did not hurt us at all.
I think, I think it helped the ice cream place too, doesn't it, having the pool open and the ball game.
Our best day was Memorial Day.
Really? I wouldn't have guessed it.
And Crawfordsville pool could be closed quite a bit next year too.
I believe it. Yeah, they've got, they've got issues up there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that.
The pool doesn't work either.
So the pool repairs, if you guys saw it, the quote, the sandblast, it was twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand. Why is it so much? Do you think it really?
I don't know, I've never hired a blaster.
I know.
That's what I was asking about, you know, when the other people.
I found two places in the area that pools were their, one of their specialties, they had good ratings. One responded to me, the other one never responded to me. I sent measurements, photos, everything to him and he came back with a price.
The guy that you?
Yes.
The thing I, uh, besides the point on price, I like the way he does it.
You know him?
No, but in that bid, he's gonna cover the pool.
Everything will be contained.
Everything will be contained in the pool, so the neighbors can't be saying, hey, you've got stuff and everything in my hair.
I don't know if that's good or not, I couldn't, I can't get another bid.
Yeah, that's the problem with you, when you only had the one bid.
I can't get another bid.
Well, would Spear know if, I mean, they do a bunch of pools.
Maybe I can ask Spear. And maybe Spear doesn't, because they're gonna hire the same guy that just gave us the quote and probably hire.
Yes, well, I mean, that.
I would say, if you're gonna talk to Spear anyway, you might ask them if they know of anybody, but, yeah, I just, I mean, it's just like the, like I, I told you and when I was talking with you earlier in the week, it's just like the, the basketball court. You know, the guy from Indy said it was gonna be fourteen grand and we got it done for like eight. Because, you know, we didn't have any idea if the fourteen was a good price or a bad price, but.
Right, but there's nobody locally that does this.
Right. So. Jay, you need new business, stay and blast.
So I guess, how late in the season can they do this?
Well, if we, if we blast it, we need to paint it right after, we don't want it to go through the winter absorbent and moisture all day. So, what I don't have is an actual quote for the paint, waiting on the paint cost. He hasn't got that from his supplier yet, so. They are currently up there working on that gutter at the top of the. It was breaking apart, there was rebar showing.
At our pool?
Yeah, at the, you know, the gutter at the top of the zero entry?
Oh.
Yeah, and it was starting to eat out under the concrete going down, so I told him to fix it.
You had to, yeah.
They're fixing it, so.
And who's doing that, these people?
Guy that did all of our, our work.
Can you say what, which one it is, cause we've had two and we're.
Darren Corr.
Darren Corr, yes.
And that's, oh, he does too. He didn't say, he said, if we can get that done fairly quickly, that he would have plenty of time to get the paint.
And John, why are we having to sandblast the pool?
Because no one will guarantee their painting over the top of all the other seven times it's been painted.
There you go.
Nobody knows what was there originally and what's been put on top of that and on top of that, so. I can't. And he said it may take three coats after we blast it, just depends on how porous the concrete is.
Who's getting the paint quote?
Darren Corr.
My guy that's doing the guy.
Others will give me quotes, but you're probably not gonna wanna use that paint, so.
Cause we've been there and done that.
Been there, done that. He did say it probably wouldn't be any more than what, but he won't give me a price yet, than what it costs to paint it. Two coats now, if it's three coats, it'll be more.
Experience comes.
And there's things you don't know, after you blast, you might find something you have to fix, so, that's why he's kinda dragging his feet on the. On the, on, cause there could be a bunch of filler in there that, where they had a void when they, uh, took the forms off. If you sandblasted, that filler's gonna be gone, we may have places you gotta fix.
Okay, so it's September now, if we don't have this done by November thirtieth, it's gonna have to wait till next spring, or that's why I kinda what I'm.
Yeah, and then if, next spring, then you have to wait.
So we may not open.
Wait on the concrete to stay above that ten year, so, you know, you start pushing.
I say go ahead and go, sandblaster guy we got and try to get it going.
I mean, I know it's a lot, but if we wanna do it and do it right, where we don't have to paint this thing every year or every other year, then we're gonna have to do it.
Yeah.
At least maybe get a hold of Spear and see if he's got someone that's cheaper.
Well, can I have a motion to go ahead and accept this after and, and let, I guess, give me permission, John can see if Spear's got anybody else?
I will ask, I can call Spear tomorrow morning and.
And let John and I make that call, is that all right with you guys?
Yeah, so moved.
Yeah, my second.
My quote was good for thirty days.
Barry Aaron, right?
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Did they, did you vote?
Yeah, on favor, say aye.
All right.
Okey-dokey, we're moving right on.
Yep, Randy, Sandy and John's recommendations for utility fee increases, it wasn't quite, because y'all didn't.
We didn't ever get together, true. So.
We've got that on our.
I move that we accept what was presented. Except for the, uh, turning it back on.
Come on, just, I gotta find my. Turning it back on?
Yeah, instead of rushing out, when they come down to pay it, turn it back on, it gets turned on by the end of the business day.
Yeah. Instead of rushing out, when they come down to pay it, turn it back on. It gets turned on by the end of the business day. Because there's no need to pull them off doing something they, they're doing to go turn water on, cause they didn't wanna pay their bill on time.
But, that's up to you guys. You're the town council. What's this top, what's the topic right here?
Water, like the fees for water.
It's, um, fees for.
Hook up.
Deposits, um, penal, not penalties, it's deposits, reconnect charges, uh, dishonored bank check charges. Tap, water tap-in fees, sewer tap-in fees.
I do have one question. The very last, you know, you, you got it under wa- electric, water, sewer.
I know what you're gonna say.
Garbage.
I've got it right. You guys want one of these?
I gotta say, Miss, how could somebody not pay the garb- oh, well, I guess they don't pay their utility bill?
You guys can't leave.
Happy bingoing. Okay, so basically, the way I went back to our ordinance book to look to see how this was, we had the dishonored bank check charge under the garbage. Because at one point in time, we had one person that only had garbage on the bill, because it was right across from the Dollar General. They used to be on our, um, sewer? No, our, our wa- our well. They're not on our sewer, but they were on our well, and then the well went dry.
That was bowl?
Yeah.
Yes. So then that's how that got in there.
Okay. Cause I was just wondering how somebody could have.
I know.
Okay.
So what we will do then is if that's, if that's how you want it to be written, it's gonna be written in this ordinance, and then when people call in, I'll tell them, I mean, you guys, I don't know, I guess it. Quarter, they're gonna have to be home at quarter four, and then you guys go out at quarter four. And if you guys, if somebody's gonna, if there's no.
Be home when I'm doing water. I can see it. It's, it's been it when I.
I, I make someone be there and return the water on, because if, if we don't, and so, you know, they went in and they turned it, and they flood it, then the town's gonna have to be. If they flood, if we flood their house, we're gonna be responsible for it.
Yeah, I get that.
So I think they should have to be there, personally.
They usually are there, because five minutes after, instead of off, they come out and make it. So they go right back home.
Okay, what, what do you think about what Randy thinks? Are you okay with that? That you don't have to drop everything and go turn it on right now, or just do it when you can?
Do it when I can.
Yeah. That's what.
I mean.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Waiting till even the.
Four o'clock.
Right, I mean, if I'm still out doing shut offs and somebody calls, I'll just go right back around. But if I moved on and I'm out here replacing a grinder or something out there, I'm not gonna stop to go do that.
That's why I prefer, yeah.
That's, that's why I said, when you're doing something else, that there's no reason to.
Right, I'll get there. I just don't know when I'm gonna get there.
When we were chatting before, uh, before the meeting started, Jay told us that Wingate's considering the exact same thing, and you said New Richmond already has?
Kingman has.
Kingman. So this is nothing new. I think we're all having the same problems. Um, so. All right, now, how, did you wanna, well, at one time, you were concerned about the.
The high deposit, but after hearing the why.
Makes sense, makes sense.
That's the same thing I questioned.
Yeah, he questioned me, and I.
I never thought about another month.
No, I didn't either.
But by the time they don't pay that, well, they've already ran up another month of billing.
There's three months. When people are gonna bill you, they're billing on you for three months worth of a utility bill. Because of the way our, our shut offs are and our billing cycle, and when we have to send billing.
You said we're already seventeen thousand and something lost?
Yeah.
Because of that?
That, you can't, like rental houses, you can't make them, you can't make the landlord pay it.
Right.
But you can put a sewer, you can add it on their sewer bill, only in the sewer.
Really?
They can't do water. You can't make them pay the water, but you can make them do the sewer.
Interesting.
I can put a lien on, on.
You can put a lien on that property for a sewer bill.
For the landlord?
Yes.
Just for the sewer though.
Sewer only.
That's not the big one. Water, electric's the big ones.
Or some, some of them. But you can put a sewer lien on a property.
That I didn't know.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, our.
Cost associated with that.
Well, and then our bill, that's what everybody's gonna say. If you, then, then we're gonna have to figure out how the bills are gonna be paid, because we have three different utilities. We have water, sewer, trash and store, water, sewer, electric, water, sewer, trash and storm with one, one bill. So who's gonna say we're gonna pay everything but sewer, and sewer's last, and then we're gonna put a lien on it. So we'd have to revamp all of that. Otherwise, you know, someone can come in and say, well, I don't want my electric shut off today, so I'm just gonna pay my electric. We don't do that. We say your bill has to be paid in full.
Yeah, I'm saying, if I live in town in a house, and I don't pay my bill, and Kyle owns a house, I pick up a move, you make Kyle pay that sewer bill, or you put a lien on that one.
He, he just saying the final bill. If somebody skips out on the bill, whatever the final sewer bill is, you can't put a lien on the homeowner. Not saying every month. He just saying if, if somebody skips out and doesn't pay that final bill.
Because I thought when we had, had this whole thing, that the homeowners, the landlords are not responsible for their tenants' bills anymore.
They're not responsible for water, electric, trash, or storm.
But sewer is, is different.
Responsible for sewer.
Don't ask me why.
Well, we'll.
All right, cause it's permanent.
Well, this'll have to be a different ballgame, uh, different conversation, cause we're not doing that right now.
Right. I was just bringing it up.
No, that's, that's fine.
So.
So we can hire another person to do all these liens, I guess, is what we're gonna go with this. But anyway.
Okay. And the trash bids. Our five-year, uh, contract is running out at the end of this year. We need to get trash bids out, and what was your, what's your, what are you trying to say here?
Well, we, two things. We talked about this at the last meeting, and wanted to have time to rebid it if it comes in too high. The other thing, and I wanna talk to people, is when we did trash originally, you guys were charged in advance, and that's even what the or- ordinance in our book says, that you were, you're charged in advance. So every time when somebody comes in here, and this has been since I've been here, and I, I stopped doing it, I just start, did it, doing it on the bill, you come in here, you put your deposits down for your, well, it's only ninety dollars in. Then Ms. Edith Rith would say, well, it's nine fifty for trash, can you go ahead and pay that too? So you're paying your trash upfront, and then we take it off your final bill. Which, you know, you had to do that to be able to pay the trash company when you first started. Well, we need to change that. And we will have one whole entire month where nobody pays trash, and then.
When they start the service.
No. You, 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 me, anybody, there's gonna be one entire month, we are not gonna bill anybody for trash. Because you've already been billed in advance. You have, I have, everybody has, because we've taken off their final bill. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna stop going into everybody's new account, adding, making their trash nineteen dollars instead of nine fifty, and when they move, taking trash off. We don't need that anymore. We had, I was gonna do that, but you spent all the money for that chipper out of the, the trash. So I was gonna try to bring that up and get that done last year. So anyway, that's, that's kind of another thing.
So what do you want us to say?
I just wanna make sure that we have enough time in here, um.
I say we, I say we.
Because what's gonna happen?
We open them next month, in November, not next month, in November.
Well, if I, if I can get it all.
Yeah, I don't wanna wait till December.
That's what I was kinda thinking too, because if we do have to rebid it, then if the price is gonna go up, then we're gonna have to have a public hearing to raise the price from nine fifty to.
And you know it's gonna go up.
Fifteen dollars, or whatever, whatever's gonna happen. I just didn't wanna wait too far.
Yeah, ten years.
But when we redo that ordinance, or if it, if, let's just say, for some reason it stays at nine fifty, I still want that ordinance redone, and I want that one month to be, where I be done. That's a lot of, every time you're doing a new account and a final bill, to have to go through all that.
Okay.
So who owns the trash dumpsters?
T and S.
T and S, the ones at our houses that we usually, if, if we trade companies, T and S will come get all them, and somebody else will bring them.
Yeah, well, okay, not every company, not every company supplies them.
We bid it to have that. That's how we bid it last time, to provide that can.
Okay.
Republican?
D and D does.
I think most of them do.
Most of them do now.
I don't think D and D might, maybe, I don't know if they could have flashed time or not. That's five years ago.
We'll find out. We'll find out.
Neil and T and S and, there's a new one just starting up.
Okay.
All right, so you got your dates?
Here's my question. If we're gonna do this trash bid, we've got one free, uh, town cleanup day.
Yeah.
It was bid that way. Do you want me to have a bid too? You wanna, you wanna have them bid at like?
Have them bid at both ways.
Okay, that's, there you go. That's what I was wanting. Thank you, Barry.
Cause if it's gonna be really, if it's, if it's gonna be like a two or three dollar a month difference, then it's not worth it. But if it's.
Pay it out of your pocket.
Huh?
You might have to pay it out of your pocket.
For the price we just paid for that cleanup, and then that shit.
That one was.
That was crazy.
That was. But, hey, yeah.
It was successful.
Hundred and, twenty thousand pounds of stuff.
What happened? When we had that one up at the park.
Oh, yeah.
And Kyle went, Kyle, those guys went around and picked up stuff. Okay. Um, all right, so you got what you need there? All right, the LTAP Payment Asset Management Plan, we gotta have it to, uh, apply for the Community Crosses Grant. We gotta get it to end up by twelve one, two thousand twenty-five. Ken Smith will do it for five hundred dollars.
I don't agree with that.
Those last year probably.
Okay. I, I move, I move that we, uh, pay Ken Smith five hundred dollars to do the LTAP Payment Asset Management Plan.
Well, he hasn't, I don't know that that's what his invoice is. I just know he's, he's working on it now, but I've been.
All right, go, I have a second?
I'm assuming it's.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, five oh.
Do we need to put if it ain't more, Sandy?
Barry, you made the motion?
Yeah.
Who seconded it? Doug?
Yeah.
Nope.
Okay.
If it's more than five hundred, then it won't be paid.
All right, then we'll have to come back and do it again. All right, Kyle, got you finally. No, not the last one. You found a police officer that might help us in the evenings.
He nights.
Nights.
Yeah. Yeah, he's, uh, county officer, been there many years, has a Wayne Town connection, married, uh, the inverse, well.
Good guy.
All of his backgrounds are fine. All of his points of employment, we have to check, have definitely good things to say. I know him personally, he's a good guy.
Yeah, he is.
Name again? Caleb Barry. He lives on one thirty-six West by his downriver, in Portland.
And the cost is going to be?
Whatever it was.
Twenty dollars an hour.
Twenty dollars an hour, fourteen hours a week, or twenty-eight hours a pay period.
Okay, it'd be nice to have, Doug needs help out there at night.
We got three now. I don't see hiring another one. We need to move them around.
I don't think we can with their work schedules.
Well, we need to put that in hiring that people have to work nights, but no, I'm against this altogether.
Okay, well, let's have a motion first.
Let, and we're gonna let the one guy go that does the church, right?
That's.
You just send that on the line, people.
That's the plan. He's, he's not paid, so.
Okay.
Yeah, he's a, he's a. It's called Thomas.
Okay.
But he's, he's not paid. I mean, he's a reserve.
Right, right. And, uh, let's do a motion that we can have a discussion with Randy. Does anybody wanna hire another one or no?
I want one that works nights. I make a motion that we get somebody that will work strictly nights.
Kyle's recommendation.
Kyle's recommendation.
Okay.
For this Barry, Caleb Barry, is that who, is that the motion? It's for this person?
Yeah.
But, but he's got to work nights.
Sounds like that's what it is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's his prefer, his preference, which is nights now.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All right. Now we can have a discussion. Go, Sandy.
No, because we've got three tops now. I see two out every day, and no, there's no reason to hire another one. It costs, costs the town more money.
How many do you see at night?
None.
So it's good to have a night guy?
Yeah, so, can't Grant or one of the other guys work nights? Have you talked to him, asked him?
Yeah, Grant can. He works five AM, like me, he works five A to five P, full-time job. Heisel, I don't know if he worked nights or not. I mean, he works twenty-four hours at the fire station, but I don't know what about the night thing.
That, to me, that's a waste of money.
It's gonna come out of the LT, uh, the.
General fund?
Yeah, you got like seventy grands that in there now, or something?
General fund.
Oh, it comes out of the general fund. Okay.
Yeah, we're having a hard enough time getting sidewalks and other things done here in town. It just, that's, to me, that's a waste.
Okay, anybody else got a comment?
I just want somebody at night.
Over there to protect Randy and Barry in the park?
Well, I mean, I had a conversation with a gentleman the other night at the F and F. There was two electric bikes there, and his son came and got on one, and this man came, got on one, and he lives over here somewhere. And, and I knew it was that kid, but wasn't it? It was his twin brother. I said, sir, I said, I've got a, I'd like for you to do me a favor, and he said, what's that? I said, the other day I've seen. Somebody on one of these bikes go totally through seven stop signs. Didn't slow down, didn't look, just, you know, just like a dog that gets off the lead strap, they're gone. The world's about them. And he said, it wasn't my son, cause they're not supposed to get off this one street, and I said, and I said, well, he looked just like him, and that, his brother shook his head and said, yeah, it was my brother. So, but like I say, I'm.
That was at night?
That was, oh, it was a little earlier than now.
Okay.
So that was, uh, it wasn't him that had kids slipping out at night, at midnight, one o'clock, that I've been seeing.
Yeah. How, how many total hours do we have right now counted for in a week? Math guys over there.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four. Out of a whole week, and a whole week is what, thousand? No. Twenty-four times seven, right?
Hundred sixty-eight.
Yeah, hundred sixty-eight.
So we're not even.
A third.
Barely about a third. So.
And it's more than any other town in this county or Allen County.
Right now?
Yeah.
The, is there a need for another one? You think there is, somebody at night?
I, I, I just know there's a need for somebody at night.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You see people down at the park, do you?
Oh, every night.
All three of us see him down at the park, and I run him out.
Does that kinda change when it gets cold?
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, it's more, people aren't gonna be out when it's cold.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I know what they're doing.
So, okay, well, um, Barry, do you have any preference? What do you think?
Well, I mean, I know money's tight, but in my opinion, I'd rather have police protection than sidewalks. So I'm in favor.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm with Barry on police protection over sidewalks. I mean, I know we can't do that because of the ADA compliance.
Um, what would you expect to happen with the added presence? I mean.
I think curvy violations will probably go up.
You mean the?
Ones. You know, I don't. I would say that, you know, probably less kids out walking the streets, they're gonna hide instead of walking down another road.
They still might be in somebody's backyard.
The heat bike thing is just a disaster that the state's created. Um, I've done a lot of research in it the last two months. And basically, an heat bike, and I, I'll have it at the fish fry, I can have all the information. Put it on the trailer so people can look at it, but, I mean, basically, it's treated just like a bicycle. So, you know, unfortunately, I mean, I don't agree with it, but that's what the state law is, and that's why I proposed that ordinance. Because the state law says they can ride it down sidewalks, alleys, streets, highways, wherever they want it, because it's a bicycle.
Yeah.
The only difference is, is if you're under eighteen, you have to wear a helmet. There's nothing about nighttime, or nothing about daytime, or nothing about evenings, mornings, I mean, it, you know, it's the same things. There's nothing about nighttime, there's nothing about daytime, there's nothing about evenings, mornings. I mean, it, you know, it's the same thing as if I jump on a bicycle, run to a stop sign, it's the same thing. And, you know, that's why you see on my monthly report that I had several that I stopped, and then it was basically a warning with education, because it was, hey, this is what you have to do. You know, I talked to the whole family that had all their kids, and on the things, I said, you know, these kids under eighteen have to have a helmet. We have my home, we said, put it on. Well, they need to have it on. So, one of the adults rode home, got their helmets, put them on, and then they rode off, you know, um.
But you think adding an officer would help with that?
No. I don't think the e-bikes, I don't think, they're not gonna care. They look, I mean, they're just like a bicycle, or a car, or a golf cart, whatever it is, and you're riding down the road, and you don't see a police officer, or you don't wanna stop, you're gonna go through it one way or another. I mean, especially bicycles, because, I mean, who stops it that stops out on a bicycle? You let both ways, or there's no car coming, you zoom through it.
Keep on going.
And that same thing with the e-bikes, the same way, I see that with cars, and I stopped a lot of cars for, just during the stop signs, because they will, they will see, by me, and they go.
But these, this boy the other day ran seven. He just, he just, he just.
Where are there seven stop signs at in Wayne Town?
He come all the way down Walnut Street, and then turned and went up by Don's house to Garfield Street. Sorry, ran all these here, and then ran the one at Garfield Street, went up to the school square, and ran that one, and then went on down, went by Jack Edwards' house, and ran the one at Jack Edwards' house, and then went down to Walnut Street and ran that one.
Doug, he was in hot pursuit.
I was just counting them.
Okay, well, let's get back on the fire thing here, where e-bikes is coming up later, and, yeah. Um, so what, I guess, Will Blazer here.
The only thing it's gonna do is you'll have.
Now, my, I got a question about this. We can't have somebody that works Monday, Wednesday, Friday of the week.
You don't want him.
You don't want where these kids can.
Well, so, the way his schedule is, is he's off Monday, Tuesday, works Wednesday, Thursday, off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, then Monday, Tuesday's on, off Wednesday, Thursday, and you can't expect a part-time guy to work on his days he's on when he's already out.
Well, but I'm just saying.
I mean, every other week is gonna be Monday, Tuesday, or weekend, or Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, but it's not like it's.
Every, I mean, it's not.
It's the same schedule every other week, is what you're saying.
Yeah, but, but I'm just saying, it ain't like you and me, we used to be out every Friday night.
Right.
Everybody knew to clean their act up on Friday night.
Well, they're gonna know it's every other.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, he can do Monday, Friday, or whatever.
Yeah.
Um.
And there'll be, though he overlaps, I mean, so there might be two of us out at night, one night, and then it might be overlap where, 'cause he's gonna do like nine to ten at night till three, four, or five in the morning. That's what he wants, so, that, you know, if I'm out, it might be an hour or two that I'm out at the same time he is.
Yeah, right, that doesn't do anything.
Obviously, I don't get a lot of questions about things, but police presence is by far the one that I get questioned about the most.
They wanna see the police.
They wanna see more police officers. I mean, they wanna see one twenty-four seven, but.
I said, well. Have fun with that, boys, will you?
Every small town like that, you're gonna want, they want to spend their whole time, but they don't wanna pay for it, and they don't wanna.
Right.
And, obviously, we saw that meeting, it's not gonna happen, so.
And, um, okay, the other discussion, we can bring it up to the vote. Are we ready? Alright, all in favor of hiring the new officer to work nights? Say aye.
Aye.
Four opposed, one.
Yes.
Four to one. Okay. And there's always, I would always say, there's always a time where we could take a position away. I mean, that's right, that's our.
Yeah, with a hearing.
Yeah. Okay, let's move on to AIM Medical Trust. The good news with that.
Yeah.
Is that what's next?
Yeah.
The good news is our price went down a hundred and seventy-two bucks. And that's for the year, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Overall.
Yeah, so it's basically the same.
It's been going up.
I was like, probably the first time in a long time I had anyone like that.
Um, no, it stayed the same. Well, see, this is our third year, it stayed the same from when we started the second year, and this is the third year.
And then.
But prior to AIM, it went.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yes.
AIM is built. In that price, AIM is building a November twenty-twenty-five premium holiday pay for medical premiums. In other words.
I will tell you exactly what that means. Jonathan, happy November to you.
You won't.
Because you are gonna benefit from this more than anybody, because your two hundred and thirty-nine dollars eighty-eight cents that you pay a month, you're not gonna have to pay it. How do you like that? So that's a holiday.
Tell my wife.
Now.
You have to buy the county council president.
Well, this is just medical, and actually, you will have to pay a little bit. It won't be exactly the two thirty-nine eighty-eight, because you have to pay for the vision and all that other stuff. So anyway, the town is gonna save, um, about four thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars because of that.
That's what the city did? Wow. So that's a pretty good deal.
You guys have been on AIM Medical Trust?
Yeah, they have, they are.
So anyway, this, this is a big deal for our small little town, and evidently a lot bigger for the, for the copper's all, but, um,
Crazy that the.
We gotta sign something saying that we're not gonna turn you, and blah, 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 but that's two good things, very good thing.
Yeah, that was a good move when we went to AIM.
Very well.
And they had a good test. Okay, the employee handbook changes to add the alcohol and drug-free workplace.
Yes, after our last county council meeting.
We talked and.
After our last county council meeting, he got with Mr., he was our attorney, and my color printer has went kaput. It's here. Mom's tech will be here Friday to install it, has to get everything hooked up with the scanning, and everybody can print to it, blah, 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 blah. But, so I highlighted it in yellow, you can't see it on your paper, but, uh, we're gonna be adding, employees cannot consume alcohol while on call or so many hours prior to being on call. You guys will have to say how, you know, decide tonight how many hours you want that to be, and then the other thing is violation of, it used to say violation of this policy will result in disciplinary procedures up to and including termination. Well, that was just because there was just like one little policy there, so I changed that, and it now says, uh, violation of the alcohol and drug-free workplace rules will result in disciplinary procedures and up to, up to and including termination. So that's what you guys will need to do.
So we need to decide how many hours before you go on.
Approve this, and then.
Twelve? Okay, the supervisor says twelve. I'm okay with that? Throw twelve in there, Sandy.
Okay.
So is there anything we need, we need to approve that tonight? Huh?
I got a question. How you gonna enforce that?
You can't.
I know.
I mean, we can only if we think.
So I mean, you, with all that being said, you're still not gonna be able to enforce it until they come to work, and it's, and somebody says, hey, you been drinking?
You're right. Alright.
That's.
You got a better idea?
No, I'm just saying, I just, there's no way to enforce that unless your random can be pulled at any freaking time.
And you can, and you can't do.
Wouldn't be random then, it would be suspicion. And they're not open at night.
So.
So, I mean,
Okay.
I mean, if we did a lot, and we needed to do this program, but I mean, as far as.
Well, I guess, only other thing was if somebody, if somebody observed, if somebody observed one of our employees, we would know. If they had a, had a beer can or a mixed drink in their hand, that, I don't know how those.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I don't know.
But if I wanted, I'm just saying, if people did anything, I could have a beer can, not have beer in it, make you think I, make, you think I did, so you'd, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
That's right.
Well, I mean, McCoulter makes one, it's zero.
Right, that's a good point.
It looks just like a McCoulter bottle, except it says zero on it.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well.
I don't, I don't.
I think it's a positive move, but.
No, I do too, I'm not arguing.
It just adds up more question.
I'm just saying, I don't know, with even with all the wording, if you can really do anything.
But this is what you wanted.
Being at work.
This is what you wanted, right?
Nobody else is here wanting to leave.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought.
The, the other question that I don't know, it don't make sense to me. How can you tell if somebody's not on the payroll, getting paid twenty-five dollars a night or something for being on call on the weekends, how can you tell them not to drink? And keep them from drinking? I mean, this is what I don't know.
Because they're only, that's what I'm saying. Until I clock in, I haven't done anything wrong.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
For you to do anything to me.
Right.
At nine o'clock at night.
Right.
Until I swipe that clock, and then ninety-nine percent of the time in a call-in, you know, nobody else is here.
There's other people, there's other businesses and places and stuff that, that has this no drinking in it. I mean, I think, didn't everybody get this from peoples?
Most of them do the.
No.
On-call pay, though.
Yeah, they get a call pay.
Yeah, but.
Just for being on call.
So they get extra than fifty to a hundred dollars a week if you're on call that week.
No.
I mean, I.
And then that.
But even then, how do you still catch anybody?
And maybe we're never gonna, so I don't know.
No, I know. Right, yeah, if you get hurt.
All of course, there and sees and smells it.
So what's, what's the Will Blazer over here?
I don't know, I'm just asking questions.
Well, no, I know.
I think we approve changes.
And we'll learn that.
Yeah, I mean, you, you just can't.
Can't.
I mean, you can't.
I do like the wording better than what we had.
The one I had.
Yeah.
There's not as much gray.
Can I have a second? Barry made the motion?
I'll make second.
Any more discussion, looking at you guys?
Who's the second?
I second it.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Five oh. Uh, let's see. Oh, oh God, we hadn't even talked about this yet. Electric bicycles, electric, electronic scooters, or.
Why don't you, you know, either paddle with your foot and then go, or have a throttle on it, you jump on and go.
Right.
Those are the ones actually that are causing probably more of the problems than, but they're a little bit more strict with the headlights and the taillight, and one of the, the same family that I taught you, one of the kids was on scooter that had that, and all of those scooters are electronic with the throttles. And those are the ones that get in trouble, because, like you said, the dog on a leash, you let it go, and there he goes. Well, give a kid a throttle, he's gonna go duck battery die. You know, so.
Pass the key, go.
Yeah.
Didn't, what's the driver's license?
You don't have to have that for those.
What about an age limit?
The, the age limit, there's no age limit. The only thing it says is under eighteen has to wear a helmet. But you can get a five-year-old on one, and do along with a helmet, and there he is.
That's state law.
That's state law, and they put it in there specifically instead of, you restrict to, do not restrict people from using e-bikes. There's no registration, there's no, you know, and that's why with this ordinance, you know, and, and it says, class one and two can go twenty miles per hour, or class three can go twenty-eight, but if you're under eighteen, you can't drive a class three. Well, I don't even know which one's what. I mean, I don't.
It's supposed to say.
They're marked, they're marked.
I think you're gonna have to have it say it on the.
They don't say it, it wasn't told me after. That's the ordinance. Right now, there's nothing on it, there's no sticker on it.
I thought the manufacturer had to put a.
Well, they don't.
They do. I went to the bicycle shop.
Well, I went, I saw, the ones that, because they'd be taken off.
Right.
You know, the ones that I saw, I even got out, looked, looked over, and I said, what classes is this? One, I said, how do you know? Well, it used to be a sticker on it, we took it off, and we didn't like it. That's why, you know, our ordinance seems to say, they're asking a sticker on it, and, you know, and I saw a kid the other day, and he went right down the sidewalk, come down the corner there, pizza came about, you know, where an old lady was going to get pizza, and that's a hitchhiker right on the sidewalk. As a matter of fact, in, in the state law, it's saying, it's encouraging riding on trails and sidewalks instead of roads.
But a class three.
If you get, you get class threes, can't.
Yeah, you can't be on the, but trails with a three.
And, but how do you know it was a class three?
Hmm.
They all look the same.
So my question, Kyle, is you took, people send, gave us the state laws, you basically took it and put it in here, and then added what extra you wanted restrictions on it?
It was state law that was there, and all I did was add.
That's what it looked like?
You can't, you can't ride them on sidewalks, or down Main Street, like the main US highways. And we had to have a little sticker on it.
So all you did was, you added everything from section three down?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought, but.
Yeah, that's what I.
And this is what you propose, what you want us to do?
This is what I think, these, I think it would help.
That's all we need to hear.
I think.
That's all I need to do.
Towards it goes, the ordinance is fine, it doesn't have to be published, you know, like, there is a penalty with a P, you know, um.
So if you guys are okay with this and wanna do it, then I'll send it to Peoples, and let him get it in, in more of the format, and then it will have to be.
I would see Peoples drawing or whatever, or drafting.
He didn't send that.
So, we don't need to vote on it, we just need the consensus.
Would you say, if you guys, this is what you wanted, to go to Peoples, to get it in regular format, uh, with these fines and everything, and then we'll publish it, and then we'll have a public hearing, and then thirty days after it's published, again, I think, I have to ask Peoples about that. Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
What do you think if a minor is breaking the speed limit? Well, right now, you write them a citation, and they, it's a big deal. I mean, it's, so a kid, a kid's breaking the speed limit, so he's going twenty-eight to twenty, and I write him a citation. He gets a citation for operator never licensed, which is a misdemeanor, and he gets a speeding ticket of a hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
On his driving record.
Yeah.
That's a big deal.
They're not gonna stay in front of my house.
That's a big deal.
See, I can, I can.
So that's the thing is, you know, how do you know, I mean, I can't, I forget it, sitting there watching and letting them know, I can tell within usually five of what they're going, but twenty and twenty-eight, I, I don't know much of the difference.
You're gonna reg, they're gonna register any?
No, they wouldn't register. They'll just have a sticker that tells what class they are, one.
Okay, they have to have the sticker.
Yeah, they gotta keep that on.
I mean, the manufacturer has to put it on there, so they're taking it off.
So they're taking it off, is what they're doing, is they make it look stupid.
So I, one thing I wanna do.
Or they're like, I believe, they're three, and they're a nose master, and so they take it off, and make everyone else think it's a two.
I get confused on when we have to publish and when we don't, or have the public hearing. I don't know, I mean, it's like our deposits.
You don't have to have a public hearing.
You don't have a public hearing.
You have to publish it after we adopt it, you have to publish it before we can start collecting fines.
Okay, so our.
It's thirty days.
Yeah, so it's thirty days.
But our other fees for the, that everybody, if everybody has to pay a fee like our deposits, then we have to have the public hearing.
Probably.
I believe. If it's a fee that you are going to be charged, I'm not gonna be charged any of this if I'm not violating, I think that's, but I will, I will double check with people.
And I, and, I don't know, but I mean, I don't feel comfortable, honestly, writing that kid an operator never licensed, or, you know, a citation for speeding, and to say, you know, I mean, that.
I do, it's one way they're gonna learn.
I don't know.
That kid got mouthy with me that day. I said, "Do you have money to pay a ticket for running a stop sign?" Yep.
I mean, I can always, and the thing.
That's right.
And that's the way with an ordinance thing, I mean, I would much rather charge the kid twenty-five, fifty bucks than, you're talking seven hundred plus, not get their license till you're eighteen, plus. And that's why with an ordinance thing, I mean, I would much rather charge the kid twenty-five, fifty bucks than you're talking seven hundred plus not getting your license till you're eighteen, plus probation, plus. You know, that to me is excessive, but that's just me, but.
I am.
I mean, for a repeat offender, maybe that's different, but, you know.
So, do we have consensus in this, our attorney?
Sure.
Yep, okay.
No, no vote, it's just a consensus.
Next is, where are we at? Two part-time deputy clerk treasures.
Yay, finally.
Do you have names?
Yes. I didn't have ordinance. Um. Let me find the ordinance. One's Tammy and one's Rose. Let's just leave it at that. Um, they both work for Heritage Products.
Randy, Tammy, or Rose's background checks.
Like, what? So, anyway, but basically, they both have worked for Heritage Products for a long time. Uh, one just retired recently, the other one had retired and was working for the Hillsboro Post Office, who also worked in this post office when Heather would be out. So, they, they're both drawing, so they can only work so many hours. They're best friends, so I think this is gonna be a win-win.
Good.
Do they live in town?
No, they live in Petersburg.
Okay, I mean, I, I just want, I didn't know, like, you had to be, your position had to be in town.
And I wish I could hire someone that lived in town, but that's just.
I was just curious. I didn't know if they had to be a town member. I was.
No, I mean, if they wanna be the court treasurer, then yes, they'd have to live in town, but neither one of them wanna be that, and.
Okay, I don't see the ordinance. Did you send us the ordinance?
Yeah.
No, no, the one.
I can, it's right here, I.
Got me a little worried. Our lady in charge of the basketball thing wants me to call her.
Okay, I'll, I'll read it if you want me to. Tammy, I'm not really sure how she says her last name, and Rose Ramsey. Uh, deputy clerk treasures for the town of Wayntown shall be paid fourteen dollars and fifty cents per hour. This is a part-time position at twenty hours per person, per week, or as needed by the clerk treasurer. Pay will be from the following funds, forty percent from water, forty percent from electric, twenty from sewer. It's gonna be adopted and passed today on three readings, um, and then it will be effective September the twenty-second. That is our hard date.
All right, I move that we pass ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-four, amendment number two.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What else you got to say there, Barry?
I would move that we suspend the rule so we can pass this on all three reading.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I move that we pass ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-four on second reading.
On second.
I'll second it. Watch you writing.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, and I move that we pass ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-three, amendment number two, on third and final reading.
My second.
All right, you got a second? Let's have a discussion on this, we really want, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See that look I got?
No, I, I, we can have some discussion if you really want to.
All right.
Really can.
Um, next is the wages for December salary ordinance.
Yeah.
You're talking about, we need to figure that out.
Well, if you want anybody, and not if we're not, if, if you're gonna raise anybody's wages, then, well, we really don't even have to, except the elected officials. Otherwise, it can just go on for as long as you want.
So.
Doesn't matter to me.
So, we've always used that committee. You hated being on that committee.
Randy got shorted last year, 'cause I bugged my knee out, so I feel like I need to take, take a dish here.
There you go.
Shorted on.
I'll let you do that, Doug.
Yep, go for it, Doug.
All right. 'Cause I know Randy got short, 'cause I popped my knee out, and that wasn't hurting Randy.
You can be on with me if you want.
You wanna be on with him? It just, okay.
Oh, I think they, I think it'd be good.
Randy and Doug. All right. Now, John, do you have any more to add?
I'll spend up your money, yes.
You have.
Kyle, do you got anything more to add?
No.
I'm gonna try not to skip you this time. Sandy, do you have anything to add? Now, Barry?
Nope.
Aaron? Doug?
Nope.
Randy? My, four scores, no. Um, yeah, fish fry this weekend, guys. Hope to see you down.
Really? Fish fry?
And if you aim to sign up and you haven't yet, there's still plenty of room. All right, I move that we adjourn.
Same.
No, thanks, see, I made that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, hang around, we'll get paperwork signed. John will turn off the mic. Hope it worked. I'll go home and listen to it tonight.